We're in here. We'll have to just give it a couple of seconds though. They say after the light comes on, we have to give it a few seconds. We're on record. Okay, thank you.
All right, let me call to order the City of Lincoln City, Monday, March 23rd, 2020, our Lincoln City City Council meeting. It's a little after 6:00. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Hogland?
Here.
Diane Kooz?
Here.
Rick Mark?
I am here.
And Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Great, thank you. For those listening in or watching, we've got a little different kind of council meeting tonight. It may look like we don't have a quorum, but there are three of us here separated by social distancing criteria. And we have the other four city councillors on the phone line, so they will be, they are included in the meeting and you'll be able to capture the audio. I apologize that this is our first kind of, not really remote, but semi-remote council meeting. I'm sure we'll get better through time. I would ask on the phone again, you know, kind of state your name as you're asking a question or have comments, so we can capture who's speaking. With that, let me, if we could stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregukable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a little lag on the audio I hear, but way to stay with us, guys on the phone. All right. We don't have anything for the consent agenda, and why don't we move right into council or public comments? If there's, Ron, you had, we invited councillor, citizens to bring remarks that they wanted read under public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we received several emails that were asked to be read as part of the public comments. I will just go through them, I'll announce who it is that sent the email, and then just read it. The first is from Mr. Stacy Baird, who wrote, "Lincoln City Council, we request the Lincoln City Council allow the formation of a private family cemetery on tax lot 06-11-27-DA-00500 7659 Northwest Logan Road, approximately 30 feet by 30 feet isosceles triangle located at the most northerly property corner. Please refer to attached map with red dots denoting the desired placement on lot 500." This, this is from Jill Townsend, who wrote, "Dear Kathy, Deanna Hinton suggested I write to you with my concerns that the city is actively promoting tourism and about the huge influx of tourists into our town. I am concerned about the increased risk of infection with the coronavirus, with our limited medical system that has had to ask for donations of personal protective equipment, and that our grocery stores are running out of food and supplies that we need. The CDC has said to stay put, and the governor suggested, but did not order it. I am attaching a graphic of the Washington Post that demonstrates how fast the virus spreads depending on how mobile people are. It convinced me," actually gives a link to the Washington Post. I was also inspired by Mayor Valencifer from Warrenton, Oregon. Saturday afternoon, he gave visitors 24 hours to leave town. He said, quote, "We'll welcome you back later. The beach is always going to be here. Clams are still in the ocean. They don't catch COVID-19," end quote. "I am not sure what you can do, but I hope that you will help us to stop tourists coming to this town until we can stop this pandemic. If you look at the animated graphic from the Washington Post, it will make it crystal clear why it is essential that we stop moving around. One person can cascade into infecting an exponential number of others. I heard from Ron Chandler that tomorrow, the city council will consider an order closing the lodging industry and a petition to the governor to close the beaches to the public. I think it is very important to close the lodging industry in town. However, I am not in favor of closing the beaches. It is easy to keep social distance on wide open spaces at the beach, and all that I have read says, and all that I have read says that when you are sheltered in place, it is important to get out in nature and get exercise, that you can stay healthier and more resilient to disease. Thanks for everything you can do to present my thoughts to the decision makers. All the best to you, sincerely, Jill." The following email came from Kathy Aha. "Mayor and City Council, I request that you still allow full-time residents beach access. As Governor Brown said today, quote, 'However, Oregonians may go outside to exercise as long as they can keep six-foot distance from the others who are not within their immediate household,' end quote. Blocking off the beach access with a sign and orange cone that says 'closed' is not legal. By law, you need to post the ordinance number. I don't believe you or the city have taken a stand to the tourists, and a lot of residents feel the same as me. You can't just decide to close off beach access and not close down VBRAs and people coming into town. That is not fair to full-time residents like myself. Are you going to have me arrested if I cross those lines? If so, you need to post the ordinance number on your paper, posted signs, and do this legally and fairly. Kathy Aha." This is from Kimberly Colbo. "As a full-time resident of Lincoln City, I would like to weigh in on tonight's city council meeting. One of the primary responsibilities of the mayor and our city council is to protect the health and safety of our citizens. I implore you to please support Governor Kate Brown's executive order 2012, as well as her latest new executive order directing everyone to stay home. Hotels and vacation rentals, BRDs, are not considered essential businesses and should immediately be closed. Not taking immediate action to close our local hotel and VR industry goes against the spirit of Governor Brown's message and jeopardizes the lives of everyone in our community. Not taking immediate action to close the hotels and BRDs would demonstrate an extreme amount of reckless and negligent behavior. Our essential businesses like our local hospital, urgent care centers, grocery stores, and pharmacies cannot support the needs of our community and the potential needs of an unchecked tourism industry. If the City of Lincoln City and the entire country do not immediately take action to slow the curve and/or stop the virus from spreading, then not only will the virus continue to spread, but unnecessarily lives will be lost, and it will prolong what could have been an eight-to-12-week quarantine, possibly a year or even 18 months, however long it takes to develop a vaccine. In closing, please take the lead of the Chinook Winds Casino, the City of Tillamook, Astoria, and countless other communities, and close down our hotel and BRD industry until instructed otherwise by our governor." This email comes from Doreen Thirkell. "I am writing to encourage you to close down Lincoln City's hotels, motels, and vacation rentals to keep the tourists out of our city while we are dealing with this pandemic. Most of our tourists seem to come from Washington, California, and Portland, all of which are dealing with high incidents and deaths from the coronavirus. To date and to my knowledge, we have no incidents in our city, and we'd like to keep it that way. Our medical facilities are not equipped to handle the outbreak of the virus that could take place should it begin to spread here. I understand that Governor Brown has closed all state parks, but I would hope that we locals will be able to walk our beaches while keeping the safe distance from each other. I'd be willing to offer my ID if that becomes necessary. In addition, while it is still difficult to acquire necessities from our grocery stores like toilet paper and hand sanitizer, it's best to keep out the tourists so they don't have that additional drain on our supplies and resources. I was horrified to see how many people from out of town were on the beaches and streets this past weekend. I think that we made it more difficult to find, I think that if we made it more difficult to find accommodations in Lincoln City, the beaches could be available and safe for locals to use, to exercise and get some fresh air. I worry as well about people from out of town that own homes here, but I don't think it would be fair to keep them away by closing our streets to incoming traffic. I hope, I would hope that they would shelter in place once they arrive here to their second home. Thank you for your attention and for doing the right thing, Doreen Thirkell." This email is from Gina Garcia. "Hello, I am writing this email to encourage the mayor and city council to close Lincoln City to out-of-town visitors. With the executive order issued today by Governor Brown, visitors should not be traveling to Lincoln City. However, we all know that will not necessarily be the case. As long as the hotels and vacation rental properties are available, tourists will come to our town. One of the main duties of city officials is to keep the citizens safe. It is our responsibility to make the hard decisions needed to make sure that happens. The risk to the citizens is increased by the influx of people from out of town and often from out of state. In addition, due to the restrictions placed on the restaurants, the retail store personnel are exposed to a very high-risk servicing out-of-town travelers, and the product levels in our store are being quickly depleted. To illustrate my point, attached is a picture of the Safeway Bread section, taken 321. The Lincoln City officials need to step up, pass their own restrictions, and keep citizens safe now. Thank you, Gina Garcia." I have two emails from Richard Townsend. The first says, "Dear Mayor Anderson and City Councillors, these are my suggestions for dealing with out-of-town visitors in order to lessen the chance of bringing COVID-19 to Lincoln City, or at least reducing its magnitude, to conserve the stock of food and other items at local grocery stores, and to reserve needed health care and hospital resources to our citizens. One, cease promoting tourism to Lincoln City and replace it with instructions to stay home for the duration and be welcomed back when the time is right. Two, demand that Governor Brown ban nonessential travel. Three, close transient lodging facilities, allowing only long-term residents, essential workers, and those working on construction projects to use them. Four, require non-residents with the exception of essential workers and those working on construction projects to leave within 24 hours. Close state parks, especially the D River and roads and state parks. Close parking and beach accesses specifically at the following. A, across Logan Road from northeast 73rd. B, at the pump station on northeast 64. C, along Logan Road between 59 and 61st. D, at northwest 35th Street, including choosing, closing the vehicular access to the beach. E, at northwest 21st Street. F, at northwest 15th Street, including closing the vehicular access to the beach. G, at southwest 11th Canyon. H, at southwest 33rd. I, at southwest 35th. J, in the center of 51st and adjacent to Mo's. And K, at Celeste's Bay Park. Seven, do not close the beaches. Residents should be able to use them for their recommended exercise and fresh air they afford, as well as for maintaining peace of mind. Do not publicize they are not closed, just don't close them. Eight, do not close open city, city open spaces, at least not the villages at Cascade Head for the same reason as the beaches. Additionally, while it has little to do with out-of-town visitors, I suggest requiring gyms to close in addition to the closure of community center. These facilities typically put people in close proximity to each other and have them share, and have them share equipment, with the result that person-to-person disease transmission is easy. Equipment cleaning between users is best, at best spot. While the exercise is good, social distancing at the gyms is almost impossible. Sincerely, Richard Townsend." The second email from Mr. Townsend states, "Mayor Anderson and City Council, obviously events have overtaken much of what I suggested in my comments to you this morning. Based on what I have read, including the governor's order of this morning, and your decision-making this evening, I urge you to allow pedestrians access to our beaches and to reopen the city's open spaces, at least the villages at Cascade Head, to hikers. The governor's order allows this provided entrances are posted with signs requiring social distancing." This email comes from Eric Anderson. "Thank you for putting this forward. Stay safe. Gentlemen, due to rising risk of tourists bringing COVID-19 to our community from Washington and California, please do what is in your power to curtail or suspend the commercial activity of our hotels and BRDs until a vaccine is available. I've been told our grocery stores are already ransacked in a time of shortage, and the population has nearly doubled with people traveling to our town. We have very limited medical support and would like to prevent an outbreak in our city if we can. My wife asked me to write you both about this issue as she is in fear. Thank you for your time, Eric." This email comes from Jan Dempster. "Dear Mr. Chandler, please consider and do all you can so that the businesses and access stay open, i.e. our huge beaches, vacation and lodging rentals, that give people the opportunity to spread out and reduce stress. Let our area be a beacon of sanity, showing our coastal strength and care by people who don't dwell on fear. Thank you for your service, especially in all that this emergency requires of you and your staff. Jan Dempster." This email comes from Meredith Olson. "Years ago, Lincoln City tried to close beaches to horses. Beaches don't belong to Lincoln City. Please solve different problems. Beaches safe when we social distance ourself." This also, this is the second email that came from Jan Dempster. "Please make it clear that our beaches, lodges, and vacation rentals don't have to be closed to others who may, who may to need to spread out and reduce stress. Closures actually would only add stress to our community probably for a very long time. Thank you for helping us, Jan Dempster." The next email, or comes from Judy Markowski, and states, "As a year-long resident of Lincoln City, and one of the many, many working poor people struggling to stay afloat over this overpriced town that only values the almighty tourist dollar and not those of us that work here, I am disgusted by the fact that I am looking at a Meredith lodging vacation rental across the street that has been rented to four vehicles full of all ages from Idaho and clearly exceeds 10 people. Prior to this rental a few days ago, I watched the Hispanic girl hired to clean it go in and come out repeatedly unprotected following the previous house full of renters. She will do the same dirty and dangerous work again in the days to come. I'm sure because it's money that matters most to Meredith Lodging, not the safety and welfare of its renters or low-paid hired help who perhaps aren't aware of the risks, especially when being allowed into a possible infected environment repeatedly by their irresponsible employers sends a message, sends the message it's safe. That is wrong and irresponsible. Allowing Meredith and others to keep potentially being part of the problem and not the solution would be wrong and irresponsible of Lincoln City. The hard-working but obscenely underpaid in relation to the obscenely overpaid cost of living employed majority. Thank you for listening. May, Judy Markowski." And finally, the last email I have comes from Elizabeth Reyes, Executive Director of Family Promise of Lincoln City. "Dear leadership of Lincoln City and Lincoln County, I would respectfully request that there be further funding of the hotel voucher program during this COVID-19 pandemic. Since June of 2014, Family Promise of Lincoln County has been providing emergency navigation and comprehensive resource navigation to low-income and homeless families. In that time, we have seen an over 80% success rate of families graduating and maintaining independence in our small community of Lincoln County. That's 107 families, over 330 people, the majority children, that were living in the streets, cars, and couch surfing, that are now safely housed, employed, and accessing all wraparound services that they qualify for, along with aftercare from our onsite case manager. We all know and continue to access information regarding best practices for social isolation and staying safe both physically and mentally. It is an unprecedented time for our families, communities, and nation. We strongly feel that the safest path for our FPLC families and Lincoln County is to keep our current three families in one place using the hotel vouchers. They would still have access to the daycare center, TAF district, for laundry, meals, computer, yard to play, yard to play in, and daily check-ins with our case manager. We have also made arrangements with Coastal Center for collaborative help to have a mental health counselor make in-house visits twice a week to meet with our families. While we can still provide resource navigation utilizing the technology, we will not, we will not accept any new families into the shelter aspect of our program. Symptoms can remain dormant for up to two weeks, and that's too big for everyone. As long as the school district is shut, we are unable to utilize any of our church partnerships to provide emergency shelter to families experiencing homelessness. TAF 712 School, which is our backup location, is unable to work with us while in a shutdown. Without additional funding for the hotel voucher program and permission to keep the hotel open there is a very real possibility that our current three families, 12 people, will have to return to tents and vehicles for shelters. While we know that there is a lot of hard work ahead of us all, we are very appreciative of all that has already been done for our families and other vulnerable people in the community. Elizabeth Reyes."
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler, I checked with Elizabeth after we all received that email, I think she sent it to all of us, and she said, and I just want to, I just wanted to clarify that she knew about the voucher program through the county and that the city was already providing funds towards that. She said, yes, she's familiar with that, and this is in addition to that because of this unplanned for not being able to use the churches.
Thank you, Ron. And I might point out, we encouraged people to send this written remarks in for this comments for tonight's meeting rather than coming in, so that's why we took the time to read it. Even though some of them are dated and things have changed, I think it's important that everybody hears them. Is there anybody in the room that wants to make a public comment? I'm looking at the few. None? None? With that, then, let's move to our special order of business, and this may clear up a lot of the comments that were made around the coronavirus and kind of a status of where we are and what we've got on the table as some action.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, it's been a very, very busy weekend with a lot of our council members, I think all of our council members, many of our staff members who have been working quite a bit over the weekend as we have been dealing with this virus. And I'm grateful for the opportunity this evening to talk a little bit about what we've done over the last three days, and also some actions that are before you tonight and for you to consider. On March 25th, I issued the following press release, in which I outline steps that the city has taken as a result of the spread of the coronavirus. First, effective Monday, March 23rd, 2020, today, City Hall is closed. We have been, limited staff, a skeleton crew for the last week or so, but we had remained open. It is now closed to the public. The library and the community center closed last week and will remain closed. And second, affected today, all city parks and open spaces, including bathrooms, are closed to the public. I might point out that the city does not have the authority to close beaches. We do have authority to close parks, which includes the parking lots at the beach entrances, and those have been closed. The city has suspended utility billing shut-offs, and this will remain until further notice. Late fees for utility billing in arrears has also been suspended until further notice. The city is contributing to the Lincoln County voucher program for unsheltered individuals and families, and the city's finders-keeper program is suspended until further notice. Throughout the weekend, representatives from all seven communities and the county, in Lincoln County and the county, have been working on a draft order that I am presenting to you I issued a press release on this today, and I'll read that for clarification as to what it is. "The City of Lincoln City has been working with Lincoln County and 600 other cities in the county to draft a joint declaration ordering closure of vacation rental dwellings, short-term dwellings, homestay lodgings, hotels, motels, RV parks, private campgrounds, and similar lodgings with some exceptions. All pools, spas, and other public bathing facilities are closed at lodging properties. Pursuant to Resolution 202006, I, Ron Chandler, have advised the Lincoln County that the city concurs with this draft order, and the city council is now meeting to ratify my concurrence. At 8:00 p.m. tonight, I will be joining other representatives from the county and the cities to provide further information. As I understand it, all, all seven of the cities and the county have been acting on this today or will acted on it within the next 24 to 48 hours. Essentially, what that means for the city council is that when I concurred with this, that put it into place. It takes effect tomorrow, March 24th. What is before you tonight is the opportunity to ratify that or to nullify that. We are asking that council does not try to change it since there's eight organizations that are working on it. All of the attorneys from the different cities have had a chance to weigh in on it. And Mayor, since we, since we have, we're doing this remotely, I would like to read this, if I could. This is order number 32385 before the Board of Commissioners for the Lincoln County, Oregon. Whereas Lincoln County by resolution dated March 13th, 2020, and ratified and extended by Board Commissioners on March 18th, 2020, declared an emergency in Lincoln County created by the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, which has threatened citizens of Lincoln County. And whereas the City of Lincoln City and Newport have also declared emergencies, and the City of Toledo, Pico Bay, Yahots, and Walport have recently adopted declarations or are planning to adopt declarations, and/or have taken precautionary actions, including closing public facilities to address the crisis. And whereas the Governor of the State of Oregon declared a state of emergency for the entire state on March 8th, 2020, finding that COVID-19 has created a threat to public health and safety and constitutes a statewide emergency under ORS 401.0251. And whereas the President of the United States signed a proclamation declaring a national emergency concerning the Novil coronavirus, COVD, COVID-19 outbreak on March 13th, 2020. And whereas local, state, and national public health agencies have instituted guidelines, recommendations, and actions to curb the spread of the disease in an attempt to flatten the curve of the disease's progression in the United States, many of those recommendations have been adopted by states and local governments across the country. In Oregon, the governor issued executive orders 23 through 2020 to slow the spread of the virus through closure of schools, restricting restaurants and bars to carry out and delivery. out and delivery dining, limitations on public gatherings, higher education restrictions, and other requirements. And whereas the governor has directed Oregonians to stay at home, to stay healthy, through social distancing actions undertaken by each Oregonian. Social distancing includes taking staycations, stay-at-home, during what is normally the spring break season in Oregon and surrounding sites. This all so includes voluntary limiting trips and contact with other people. And whereas the implementation of the governor's social distancing order in public campaign has not proven effective on the Oregon coast and Lincoln County as a significant out-of-county visitors have continued to come to the coast in recent days despite the stay-at-home order directive. Repeated instances of violation of the social distancing norms have placed county resources and residents at much greater risk of the spread of the virus. Closure of short-term rentals in the northern parts of the Oregon coast threaten to move significant vacationers to south, to Lincoln County if no actions are taken. And whereas numerous public and private health officials in the state of Oregon and beyond have called for more stringent and aggressive social distancing measures, including stay-at-home, shelter-at-home mandates, because the voluntary social distancing actions are not being followed in many areas, including the California-Oregon coast. And whereas the Lincoln County Public Health Administrator and local health officer both confirmed that continued influxes of visitors, turning over on a short-term basis increases the likelihood of the spread of the coronavirus more than longer-term tendencies and threatens the limited healthcare resources available in Lincoln County, and therefore recommend the county consider temporarily limiting short-term visitors to the county until the crisis ends. And whereas it is necessary that a coordinated and collaborative act should be taken by all impacted jurisdictions in Lincoln County, and therefore concurrence of the city councils of all county coastal cities, Lincoln City, Depot Bay, Newport, Walport, Selette, Toledo, and Yahots, is necessary to full implement the actions authorized by this order and desired from the cities of Selette and Toledo to evidence the full support of Lincoln County entities. And whereas pursuant to the authority granted the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners under ORS Chapter 401, ORS Chapter 431, as the local public health authority, Lincoln County Ordinance Number 502 Emergency Services and the Lincoln County Emergency Operations Plan, the Board of Commissioners deems it necessary to institute a temporary order closing hotels, motels, short-term residential, and homestay lodging, RV parks, and public and private campgrounds to recreational visitors. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered as follows. One, state parks are closed by order of the governor. County and city parks are closed to camping except for camp hosts or other persons authorized by the county or city for stays 30 days or longer until the emergency ends. Two, all short-term rentals defined as rentals of a duration of less than 30 days in vacation rental dwellings or short-term dwellings and homestay lodgings are prohibited in Lincoln County until the declared emergency ends, April 30th, 2020, or this prohibition is otherwise ended or modified by separate order of the Board of Commissioners, whichever occurs first. Three, all hotels and motels, RV parks, and private campgrounds and similar lodgings or housing not identified above are closed to short-term rentals of less than 30 days except as follows. A, stays for 30 days or longer are allowed. B, local county residents affecting a COVID-19 self-quarantine who have moved from their local residences in order to allow a family member or roommate to self-quarantine in their local residence. C, families or individuals residing in lodging for less than 30 days if this is their only means of shelter. Includes, but is not limited to, vouchers for stay provided by local or regional governments or nonprofit agencies. D, employees of the facility providing lodging as a requirement or a benefit of their employment. E, patients or families of patients receiving medical care at local facilities. F, essential workers, including but not limited to doctors, nurses, other health staff, home and health care workers, Coast Guard members, truck drivers, and supply providers working in the county whose employer pays for lodging, construction worker on local projects, including public contractors, utility crews, and other persons whose work in the county requires temporary accommodations. G, other persons or categories of people whose city managers or county council deem consistent with the intent of this order after consultation with the local public health administrators. Four, all pools, spas, and other public bathing facilities are closed at lodging properties for the duration of this order. Five, lodging property owners or managers are required to keep a log of what exception is met by current lodgers. This will be made available upon request to city and county officials. Six, this order takes effect upon adoption by the county. Property owners and managers of properties affected by paragraphs 1 through 3 above shall take all reasonable steps to terminate current occupancy of any guest not exempted herein by no later than 12:00 noon on Wednesday, March 25th, 2020. No new occupancies in violation of this order may be rented effective 8:00 a.m. Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. This order may be modified, rescinded, or extended by authority of the Board of Commissioners in consultation with the cities and local public health administrator. If so modified, a copy shall be provided to the cities of Lincoln City, Depot Bay, Newport, Toledo, Selette, Walport, and Yahots. Eight, this order was presented and concurred or to by either authorized city personnel or the direct action of city councils of the city of Lincoln City, Depot Bay, Newport, Walport, and Yahots on March 23rd, 2020 at a joint public meeting with the Board of Commissioner and therefore applies within the incorporated boundaries of those cities. At any time, the city council of any of these cities may opt by council action to rescind that concurrence, at which time the order will have no effect within the boundaries of that city without necessity of any further action. Nine, copies of this order shall be provided to Jenny Nemaris, her emergency manager, Wayne Belmont, county council, and representatives of each city listed above. Dated March 23rd, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, Katie Jacobson, Chair, Doug Hunt, Commissioner, Claire Hall, Commissioner. Mayor, as stated, I gave concurrence to this under the authority of our emergency declaration, and what is before you now is to ratify this or to nullify that concurrence. There is a little bit more information that I wanted to bring out. These types of actions don't come without cost. And I do want to point out that for the city of Lincoln City, the cost that we estimate for one month of lost transient room tax revenues from the closure of the hotels, motels, BRDs, and so forth is estimated to be $900,000. This is based on the April 2019 revenues, and this would affect the following departments. Administrative departments, almost $48,000. Police, estimated to be $130,017. Facilities capital, $89,666. The Explore Lincoln City, $273,486. Streets, $179,332. Parks, $164,294. Community center, $15,039. If ratified, I will begin working with the department heads tomorrow to revise this year's fiscal budget to reflect the loss of revenues we anticipate receiving.
Thank you, Ron. That's a lot of reading. I'm glad you're doing it rather than me. Have some water.
Thank you.
Any questions on the phone? Hearing none. Questions in the room?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we will be having this without changes, but two questions that may be addressed later. One, I'm glad to see there was exceptions in the ordinance. And I'm sorry, Rick Mark. To keep hotels open if they were needed to house homeless, you know, people getting vouchers on a weekly basis. But I'm wondering about the logistics of how that actually might work. I mean, are there certain hotels that are selected to stay open only for that purpose? Or I mean, I'm having trouble picturing that. And the other huge thing that we're going to have to talk about tonight is the beach and what's new about, I'm hearing clamoring on both sides. People tend to want to keep it open only for locals, and I'm not sure how to make that happen. So those are my two things.
Well, let's answer the question first. The question on the vouchers and how the vouchers tie to a place of lodging.
Right now, the county has committed $10,000 to this voucher program. They have requested of the city, and I have approved this request, of $2,500 to go into that voucher program, and Newport has been requested to contribute an additional $2,500. The county is administering that. People make applications to the county, although I have not seen exactly what the applications look at, but it is being administered through the county and through their health department.
And I can add to that, that the contact person in the north end that the county's working with is Amanda Cherry. So she's kind of the point person that the agencies would and have gone to, and Cherry ends up talking with the county. Does that answer that question, Councilor Mark?
Well, I guess something didn't figure out which hotel stays open, but it is just not my business. So I'm sure someone's going to figure that out, and I just wonder how it's going to work.
Yeah, and you're right, that conversation is going on, you know, within that voucher program at the county level and with the vendors.
I think they've identified.
Right.
And that also raises the question about the family comments request and how do we address that? So maybe we can talk about that after we.
Yes, we'll talk.
What on this rest?
Yeah. And then your other question was, remind us?
The beaches.
Oh, the beaches. Well, as Ron indicated, the beaches aren't ours to open or close. We barricaded access points, and so they're, quite frankly, not attractive to, and parking is not available.
The next item that we have to discuss after we finish with the declaration is, as I mentioned to you in an email, is do you want to petition the governor to close the beaches? At this point, the governor has not done that, and we don't have the authority, as I mentioned, to close the beach, but we can petition the governor if you so desire. So that's an item I wanted to bring before you tonight as well.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Diane.
Okay. Diane, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, isn't the beaches considered a safe park?
It is, and that's a fine line. That specific definition has been asked for, and it's at this point not being concluded.
I might point out, this is Ron, I might point out that the state has closed Bee River Wayside Park and Rhodes Inn Park. They're barricaded in front of both those parking lots, and those were put up by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Riley or Mitch, did I hear? Okay.
No questions.
Okay.
I'm not sure where prerogative is, but my concern is the restrooms all being closed.
But that's a city one, not with this. We can come back to that. Yeah, so let's.
You're looking for a motion, Your Honor, Council, you're looking for a motion to ratify Ron's concurrence of this.
Yeah.
Diane. Before I finish with comments, I just want to move to.
That's what she said.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to anyway. I move to ratify the, whoop, hold on just a minute.
Ron's concurrence.
I'm sorry, but we can't hear.
Okay, I'll speak louder just a second. Give me a second. Okay. I move to ratify the county's Order Number 3-23-85.
And Ron's concurrence.
And Ron, I'm sorry.
And Ron's concurrence of such.
Yes, and Ron's concurrence of such.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to ratify Ritzland from the county and Ron's concurrence of. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Kathy?
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hoiblind?
Are you there, Riley?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did he hear me at the end?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
And Mitch Parsons?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ron, I'm sure everybody has also heard or read the latest executive order from the governor this morning, and that also certainly has more impact on the concerns that have been raised in the public comments and emails and everything else. So I think the combination of these two meet the needs and concerns of just about everybody we've heard from.
I would agree.
Okay. Councilor?
I just have a, just a clarifying question. That means with both the things that you just listed, the governor's order and then also the latest from the county, does that then mean that we, the city, don't need to go, don't have an ordinance or a resolution to, we don't need that? Is that correct? To do the same type of thing as the county does? We do not need one? Is that correct?
Correct, because you just ratified what they did, so that's correct.
So we just wanted to get clear.
Yeah, I might just take a moment, again, apologizing to the citizenry for thinking we weren't acting quick enough. We were watching up and down the coast, and I think it gave us plenty of examples of what wasn't working very well. And the furthest north coast was a good example where one city took initiative on its own and which forced another city to jump in, and nothing was coordinated, and their resolutions or proclamations, all, none of them were the same. So there became a push guest to a different community kind of scenario. Tillamook tried to do it with a countywide, but even that because of jurisdictional. And so we had the advantage. And so we had the advantage certainly of seeing and time to see what would work better. And that's why Lincoln County took the initiative with talking with all the cities and the county just to do this ordinance from the county, because we have the state dictating the county and then we're ratifying, you know, the county. So we're all consistent, city by city, and it'll make it even easier when we come out of this. So there's consistency when we come out and off the emergency provision. Councilor?
This is Deanna, and I just want to take a second here to thank both the mayor and Ron.
Can we, President Riley Hobland, we cannot, I cannot hear her at all.
Oh, well, I am.
Okay, we're going to try to, see if that helps. See if that helps.
I'm sorry, I don't have a loud voice. Can you hear me now?
It is not better yet.
Okay. We turned the phone around, so now we can see you. Just kidding. What I was saying is I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge the work that Mayor Anderson and our city manager, Ron Chandler, have been doing over the last three days. It has been an unusual amount of work and coordination with the county and the other cities, and I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Judy Casper, I also think that this was a good wake-up call for all of us. It was something that we hadn't expected, like a tsunami. And to me, I find that there was a big lack of communication with our, with our community and with ourselves, council members, as to what was going on. And it's became very apparent that we need to do something with our technology and our IT to get the message out consistently and readily, because I think that was a big gap and grave concern for the community that we weren't listening, we weren't doing anything, and it created great frustration and anger. And I have even been called some words I haven't been called, and I don't think that's proper. But I'm strong, and I really don't matter that much. The other thing is with the governor's edict, talking about beaches, she mentions if you violate it, which includes beaches, I believe it's 401.990 about enforcement. And I checked with our attorney as to what that meant. And it means a fine of $1,200 or 30 days in jail. So I guess my question is, if we go on our own beaches and they are property of the state, does that mean that we're subject to a fine or 30 days in jail or a citation that we get a fine in the future? That's my concern.
Judy, if I can.
Yes.
I don't recall reading that the beaches were off limits, so.
It says, we say, she says we close the state parks.
Correct.
And.
But we're not getting a definition that the beaches are the state parks.
So we should, we should proceed under our own logic and use the beaches as we need to, as residents?
Well, if you go, if you go to the D River State Park and you hang out there, you can be arrested with a Class C misdemeanor, which is 30 days in jail, $1,250 fine up to. If you go onto the beach, remember the Supreme Court in Oregon held that in Thornton versus Hay, I believe, that the public has the right to use the beach, said easement in the beach. So I believe that when the governor says state parks are closed, she's not referring to the beach.
So I might point out, remember, we have an unusual situation here where we get inundated with day trippers.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully, the executive order by the governor will stop that. But that's also why we, the city, have chosen to close off accesses.
I understand that.
So what we're trying to do is, without having to say it.
Yeah.
Because it's not, we don't have that authority, but we've made it less attractive or less convenient to utilize the beaches.
So I would think if you could walk to the beach, because you can't park there, one could go to the beach.
Right. I have the answer. This is Deanna, for those of you on the phone. I'm reading the state park's latest press release, which is today's date, and they say that with new guidance from the governor and clear signs that travelers are not following advice to avoid full parks, a statewide, a statewide state park closure is necessary. Beaches can be closed by OPRD at their discretion and will be closed if social distancing practices are not followed, so they are not closed.
All right, so that's settled. We can walk six feet apart.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I just wanted to ask, so thanks for that clarification on the beaches. I'm also looking at the governor's order that she signed today, and there's a paragraph that basically encouraged that individuals may go outside for outside recreation activities, walking, hiking, et cetera, but must limit those activities to non-contact and are prohibited from engaging in outdoor activities where it is not possible to maintain appropriate distancing, six feet or more between individuals. So I think those two elements make it pretty clear to me that the locals could certainly walk to the beach and outside, driving from the valley, and they are willing to park some distance from the beach. I don't think that we can stop them as long as they maintain that six feet of distance. I don't think that applies to couples, you know, family, families. But I believe the police would have the authority to warn those people, cite those people if they're gathering in groups and not respecting the purpose order.
Yes, that's our interpretation as well, Councilor. Could we then take up the question of restrooms? It has been raised, I think, in our initial, one of our actions on the city level, we've chosen to close restrooms. It has come back to us a couple of different ways. Truckers might need something passing through. So, Ron, have you given that thought and what might be a?
I have. We closed the restrooms in the, with the thought that by doing so, it will discourage people from coming, tourists from coming here. And that closed all of the restrooms. The question that really kind of came before us is, should all of them be closed, or are there some public restrooms that should remain open? As I look at those, the beaches, the parks we have where we own a, that have a parking lot at a beach entrance, and we have restrooms there, those should remain closed. If we're trying to aid people that may need a restroom, then the ones that are more in the business district, like on 17th and Highway 101, then leave those ones open. But again, it comes to what is it that you're actually trying to accomplish? I think it will be a challenge to keep day trippers from coming here. We see that often, where we see cars from people from the valley that are parking on roads and then walking in because the parking lots are full. I suspect we will see some of that. And so for me, if our goal is to discourage tourists from coming to Lincoln City, then another way to do that is to keep the bathrooms closed.
I might point out, I did see a notice from McDonald's inviting truckers to use their parking lot and restroom if they so desire. Again, with the limited retail businesses, I'm kind of assuming most delivery vehicles will be reduced, except for where they're delivering merchandise anyway, and those have restrooms. So I'm sure that's always where they utilize. Because I was starting to think, to Ron's suggestion of 17th Street being open, where would you park a truck? And then if not the trucker, who would you be trying to service much to your?
I just wanted to offer this. Martha Watts with the Child of the Gathering Place contacted me, and she requested that some restrooms, whatever, be left open for the homeless because they need.
It's important to note, though, that our restrooms close at night already, at dusk, as we're entering into the summer season, spring and summer season. We do close our restrooms at dusk, and so we would not change that practice. We would say, no matter what, if which ones remain open, we would still keep them closed throughout the night.
So then.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I disagree with the intent on closing the restroom. I feel like if, I agree with closing the parking lots, and I feel like that's an efficient method to discouraging day trippers from using the facility. But if you walked from your house to go to the beach and spend the time at the beach, inevitably, you or someone, you know, your family member will probably have to go to the bathroom. And so by allowing the people to have access to the beach, which is what I believe are right, and I don't agree with shutting the beaches down, and further, Mr. Townsend's point, the open spaces, I don't believe those should be closed either, but I think that closing the bathrooms is not a great idea, and it does limit those people that are homeless from having access to, you know, going to the bathroom and staying up, you know, on their hygiene.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, just.
Diane, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I have to agree with Riley. I think it's very important that restrooms do stay open, just for the fact that if they're going to be closed and we still have people coming, what is their alternative? And I have seen that happen. So bushes become restrooms, and I don't think we want that to happen.
Councilor Mark?
Diane and Riley said it better than I could. I agree with both of them.
So is that a consensus? I hear three.
This is Mitch. I also concur.
So to keep the restrooms open?
Yes, during the day.
Yeah, and still closing at dusk, which is our policy now?
Correct.
Would, would you envision all of them? Or can we reduce some?
I would say you could reduce.
I don't have a reduction. I mean, I don't know how you're going to effectively manage that and determine which ones are higher than others. It would probably just be easier to keep them open and then have them all, because we're going to say, well, these bathrooms are closed, please go 15 blocks to the south. I don't feel that that's an effective way to prevent people from using bushes for bathrooms.
There's a challenge that you have of what you're describing. It's not a challenge for, well, it's a challenge, because if the parks remain closed, then you're inviting people to come to a bathroom in a park that's closed. So that would include opening, regardless, which is one of the items that the governor specifically says we cannot be doing, is having people on playgrounds. And so.
Thank you for the clarification. I had intended just for the beach access, the point of which we maintain bathrooms for accessing the beach. I did not intend for this to be for the park that are five degree closed.
How many do we?
So there are other ones that over at Sandpoint and Holmes Road and, trying to think other places around. So Riley, you're saying just along the coast, that'd be the one Mose?
Josephine Young.
Yeah, Josephine Young and.
Yeah, I believe, you know, 51st, 33rd, 35th, you know, 17th Street, you know, northwest, you know, as they go down, you know, the ones that we maintain is what I intended. That way, those that are going to the beach, they have those bathroom facilities, you know, the homeless population are already aware of the bathrooms, and I don't feel that's an effective way.
Okay.
Well.
Go ahead.
Well, I was thinking of the one on Highway 101. I was thinking of also travelers that drive through town, and the one in Ocean Lake on Highway 101 is not by a beach. It's one that could be used.
Okay, we'll add 17th to the list, yeah.
I would add that as well.
Okay. Councilor hinted.
My question is more pragmatic. Do we still have staff available to clean them, and how often would that have to happen? Is it more frequent now than?
At the risk of causing a lot of fear for our employees, all of our employees are continuing to be employed. However, we are losing $900,000 in revenue, and we will have to make that up some way. And that will either come through reserves or will come through cutting costs. It's not my intent to lay off any employees, but we will have to make up $900,000 per month. So if this goes into May, then it's another $900,000.
So my question further than.
Hold on, Riley, a minute.
So the second part of my question, then, knowing that, is could we ask Mr. Chandler to kind of, to tell us what seems feasible, given staff and location, knowing what he has heard today? It might make a difference of how many people are affected.
There's so much reverb, we can't, I can't hear what you're saying. It's too loud of a space, and the sound of Deanna speaking is muffled by the amount of volume I have to turn up my phone. I really can't hear her.
I don't know sign language.
All right, we're going to try to move this. You don't have any trouble with anybody but Deanna?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to try, we're going to try moving the phone even closer.
You may have to lean over.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
That's also better, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Sorry for my not very loud voice.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. What I was just suggesting is that now that we've discussed and narrowed down the restrooms to a shortlist, which beach access, the one on 101, and have some consideration for staffing and cleaning those, if we just ask Ron to see if, my question really is, how many times do we have to then clean the restrooms? And how much staff that takes? And if Ron can get, get some, you know, get some staff to say, yes, they would do that. I'm not sure employees, employees are uncomfortable right now with this, just as all of us are with this virus. So we just need to.
So how about, how about if we have, I'm sure, I'm sure, could we just direct Ron, we'd like to amend our earlier action and, you know, keep some restrooms open and available and have staff look at that to assess our combination of balancing budget with staffing?
It might not have to be as cleaned as often because it won't be used that much.
We would put up a sign saying that, clean once a day only or whatever. Or would porta potties be cheaper?
Could it be, could we put a sign on the bathroom that says, please, if cleaning is necessary, please call this number? And it could be a number towards something that could be a cleaning on-call due to the COVID-19.
No, no, let Ron, let Ron take.
These bathrooms are based as an on-call basis. And that way, if they need it or need toilet paper or whatever, I mean, we could have people passing by, let us know if it's a potential. people passing by, let us know if it's a potential.
What Ron thinks?
Yeah, I would lay on it if you don't mind. I have faith in staff. If we could throw it to staff and come back and tell us what he's done, we can adjust along the way. But our desire... What's that, Riley?
I said, yes, of course.
Okay. As long as we have the ability to adjust and go with that. Is that our, Ron, consensus? Is that a consensus from council regarding bathrooms?
Yes.
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 Okay.
What's the penalty for stealing toilet paper from the restroom?
It's big. They have to clean it.
Okay. Ron is...
If we could notify, if we could just notify also the homeless shelters, any bathrooms that we are closing, could we please notify the homeless solution people that, so you know, if you could tell your people that you are in contact with, these are the following bathrooms that will be closed. That way, no one on the homeless side is unknown.
Okay. All right. Ron, is there other issues around the Corona issue that we need to either address or...
There are, but they can be, they can be delayed until your next meeting and it can be an opportunity to work them a little bit more.
Okay. Deanna?
I just want to say that I've had a lot of contact from people and I just want an opportunity just for a second to talk about that. I've had, like everybody has had, been getting email messages, text messages, Facebook messages, Facebook Messenger messages, face-to-face telephone calls, but just a glimpse, if I counted right, 33 individual messages. Some of those individuals have emailed me six times and I've responded to all of them. I'm just saying this, you know, we're trying to let people know that we're working on this and it just be wait. But there is a couple of people who had specific suggestions. One is, okay, most, almost all of them have supported closing lodging accommodations, so I just wanted to say that. And nonessential businesses was the other one that they have said. And then leaving the beaches open, leaving the beaches closed, I've had 50/50 on that. Two have suggested closing Logan Road, but I think you've already mentioned that, Ron. Some have worried about the grocery stores and that they're not all reacting in the same way. I don't know if we have any control over that, but they said one grocery store is doing everything right. They're wearing gloves, all of them. They're asking the customer to bag their own stuff. They wipe down the keypads and the counter. And some other ones are doing nothing, just as usual. And then we already talked about the public restroom. The other one was also from Martha Watts from Shiloh, the Gathering Place, and she's asked to make sure she's considered essential services, that her business is, and that she needs volunteers to shop, do shopping for shut-ins.
So again, even essential services need to respect and comply with social distancing. So keep that in mind. Yes. Okay. Why don't we put that topic to bed for the interim? I think we are learning a lot and again, as Ken Murphy has told us, we were more likely to come testing our system long before the tsunami came. And, you know, I hate to tell him he was right, but we can, we'll be adjusting after this is over. And thank you, Judy, for, I would agree, the communication piece is a big one.
Before we leave this topic, before we leave this topic, I just have one other thing. I don't know if we were going to talk about the financial impacts anymore or if we're going to just move along with it because I have three.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I can just bring these up. There's been some suggestions. And like I said, they're not fully played out, but they have been suggestions. I mentioned already that the city is not doing shut-offs for the water bills, but there's also been suggested of doing something with the bills themselves, delaying the payments of them until things get, until the emergency's over and so forth. There's also been a request by the Chamber of Commerce to adopt, to adopt something similar to Beaverton where there's a payment to businesses that are affected by this. And then there's also even been a request to assist, to assist people that have gone onto unemployment. All of those are very good suggestions. I think the thing that I would like to do on those, I think we have a little bit of time for this, is to bring those back to you at the next meeting when we can also talk about the impacts of, the budgetary impacts of what happened tonight.
I would agree. I think what we're getting into then is the, and we should, planning for the recovery. I think we've hopefully stopped the bleed and made, shored ourselves up for some protection and now we can get into recovery. So I would agree. I think those are on the table and it's a good starting point to at least talk about. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I add one more thing to that list possibly? I've been hearing from a lot of people that have children and wrecked kids and they're, they've already paid, but their accounts were credited, means we were shut. Is there any possible way to refund them their money?
All right, that's, let us look at that.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I still have a few things that have been brought to me that haven't been brought up.
Okay.
The, a lot of people working from home feel the need that having their dogs at dog care facilities are very important and that they feel like that's an essential business. Not having the kids, I know Governor Brown's statement of daycare facilities that are still able to be open, the center left as long as the neighborhood cares and these homeowners that, you know, rely on dog care facilities to house their dog during working hours is very important to them. So I know, I don't know if that's off the list. And...
You know, I can't...
Businesses, the businesses that are providing food, I have, I think, two others of us received an email from a local business donor where they talked about somehow, let me pull it up here, I'm sorry, some sort of assistance on the local level of helping these businesses buy the food in order for them to cook and serve the community. So many immunocompromised people that they're using a lot of the local businesses for their daily meal and that they're being delivered. And so is there any kind of, could the economic development fund, fund loan for this kind of food purchasing?
Okay. On the list of...
And then there was another one from Jay Roloff. He sent a few different emails. Did you get those, Ron? I mean, I don't need to bring those up. There's a lot of questions.
I have received some, but I'm not sure which one you're, that you're referring to.
The, hold on, let me, sorry, I don't have it pulled up. Apologize.
Could, you know, could we...
I'm sorry. Yeah, I can send them, I could just forward it to you.
Yeah, man, because since these will be, you know, down the road...
I have it. Are we using the old hospital? Is there any talk for the old hospital to be used that instead of tearing it down right away, to use it as a pre-assessment area in the event? Does the hospital still have the beds that they have currently in there? Do they get moved? And so there was a lot of questions about using the old hospital as a potential facility.
Okay.
Ken doesn't know.
But, no, I didn't, we'd go to the medical stuff.
Yes, he might.
But I think, you know, as Ron indicated, he'll take a look at these if they're down the road because we're talking possibilities and, you know, we're talking about budgets and staffing, what can be.
Counselors, if you have suggestions and they're coming into you in emails and my name is not on the email, please forward them to me so that I have those that I can take a look at.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to other city business tonight. Under special order of business, we have an intergovernmental agreement for mid-coast water conservation consortium.
Counselors, your honor, there's an IGA for mid-coast water conservation consortium, which is just a fancy name for a bunch of cities in a special district. We received last year a proposed intergovernmental agreement which involved the creation of a intergovernmental entity, which has to be done by ordinance. It's much more involved, it basically died, stalled, nobody wanted to do that. So what I did was I took a shot at simply taking what they wanted to do, cooperate and putting it into a more general IGA form without creating an intergovernmental entity. And just to start now by the motion, the proposed motion is approve the IGA with allowance for Ron and I to make minor adjustments since we'll have to go through all these other entities. So that's, in short, what we're looking for. And the IGA is mostly about cooperating on conservation measures for water, water sources. It's, you have sent staff to this. Stephanie, I think, is a regular attendee. So it doesn't change any of that, just says we're going to cooperate toward our everybody's benefit.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. I remember, yeah, that Stephanie's part of this consortium and on our behalf. Are there any other financial attachments to this IGA?
There's, there's nothing nailed down at this point. It's just pretty much we're going to agree to agree on what the assessment would be. So we don't have the, I mean, what was proposed before was we were going to create another intergovernmental entity and fund it. That's not what it is proposed now, which would lessen the cost, whatever that cost ends up being. But at this point, we don't have a number to give you. Now, I'd ask for a roll call vote because I think there will be some costs. It's not going to be free. Certainly at this point, we've only really spent staff time sending Stephanie to meetings.
Okay. The reason I was asking that question is that I would like to see an effort towards protecting the watershed that our water source comes from. I know that's not related to this, but that's an effort too as well, Forest Service, BLM, private timber and other private properties within the watershed. I mean, when we're talking about water, I would like to make sure we don't forget our own watershed that...
Actually, this does, to correct you, this does cover. It's kind of the central coast, so it's up and down.
So that could...
Could.
By doing this, that could afford also Stephanie to help coordinate some effort there.
Well, and that's why Stephanie and others have been participating in it to keep moving. But my understanding and reading this, you know, we can opt out. I mean, right now, this IGA is just, you know, it's got to go through a lot of different entities and changes. And so there'll be a coming back with changes, I understand.
If there's anything other than minor tweaks, I'll get back to you. And this is just trying to get the ball rolling because it's basically stalled for the last six months. It's gone nowhere. And the intention wasn't to give Ron and I carte blanche, basically if it's a major change, we'll come back. And I wish I had more information about what they wanted to do more, you know, some actual numbers about what they want to do, just to try to move it forward.
And I would also offer up, like all things, it's still is a budget item because, you know, if it's going to cost money, you know, that, there's your...
And I've placed in here references to, subject to local budget law, I will do this. So with that, I'd ask for authorization to approve the IGA with permission for Ron and I make minor changes as opposed to the process.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Second, Riley Hugland.
So Riley's making that motion. Does anybody want to second it?
Second.
Rick Martin made the motion.
Oh, we didn't hear you, Rick. Okay, Rick. And Riley seconded it? All right. Any discussion? Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hugland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item of business under special orders is the economic development, Rose End Villages at Cascade Head Urban Renewal Area Draft Plan. And Allison, are you on the phone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Take us away.
Okay. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Tonight, and just to, I should say, this is Allison Robertson. I'm with Economic Development and Urban Renewal. And we're here tonight to continue discussions of a new urban renewal area for the Rose End Villages at Cascade Head Draft Plan that we've been working on for some time in conjunction with Elaine Howard Consulting. Elaine Howard, our consultant, is on the phone. As is our Economic Development Coordinator, Jody Messer, who has been doing a significant chunk of the work on this project. So tonight, what we would like to do is talk to you a little bit more and answer any questions that you have on what we've done to date. At the last meeting, we did go into detail on the input that we've received from the public, from the last community forums that we've had. And we did a survey online for people who were out of town through the winter so that input could be provided. We had a meeting with the taxing districts to let them know what we were doing and answer any questions that they had. And now at this point, we are here to, again, answer any questions, do some discussion, and then we are hoping to seek some direction from the council about proceeding with creating this draft plan. And then we would bring that back to you in, I think it's late July, sometime in July, to consider that draft plan for adoption or formation of that new urban renewal area. So tonight, we have, we would like to know if you all can approve the draft boundary of the new urban renewal area, the timeline, which we currently have proposed at 25 years, and then the list of projects that would be pursued in the Rose End Villages at Cascade Head Urban Renewal Area. Please keep in mind that if the list of projects, if it's not on the list of projects, that we cannot spend any money on it. And if it is in the list of projects, it is our intention absolutely to do that project or do a portion of that project to leverage urban renewal money to accomplish those projects. But it doesn't always mean that the projects get done across 25 years. There can be some changes in budget or project priorities or grant funds may become more or less. or less available. And so with the annual budget process over the duration of the plan, projects do have the possibility of changing. So I just want to mention that if it's not on the list now, it means it can't be done sometime during the life of that plan. So, we started this project in July of 2017. We held a joint work session to talk about economic development topics and urban renewal. We have had some success with urban renewal. We have one urban renewal area in Lincoln City now. We formed that in 1988, and we expect to pay off the last bond for that urban renewal area in 2021. And, let's see. So then, in September of 2017, the Council decided that of the urban renewal topic, I'm sorry, of the economic development topics, they wanted to hear more specifically about urban renewal districts. In 2018, we did a mobile tour. We, at your direction, we started some feasibility studies. And then we heard that you were supportive of removing the tax-exempt acreage from the existing urban renewal area to free up some acreage so that we could talk about forming a second urban renewal area. And so we have been working, again, on this effort since April of 2019. And so the next steps we have before you are that we have, Project Advisory Committee has recommended moving forward with Boundary A. All of the acreages in Boundary A is located within the city limits, so we would be able to make the formation of the area happen more easily than if there is property located in the county or outside the urban growth boundary for that matter. So this is a fairly straightforward boundary. The proposed project list, and then also 25-year timeline for the draft plan. Again, the Project Advisory Committee recommended moving forward with all of those three components of the draft plan. Based on the updated financial information, we are happy to go over a discussion on the project, which we also did at the last meeting, but we can drill down into greater detail if you'd like. And then we would like to have some kind of direction from you on how you'd like us to proceed with these next steps of the urban renewal draft plan. At the last meeting, also, I just want to mention, when it comes to the project list, the topic of emergency preparedness is on the project list, but there is no dollar amount estimated for that project. And so we are open to whatever your suggestions are. Right now, I think the current project list is at about 93% of the total project dollars that we anticipate for that area, so we do have some room to add some funds for that project. I did take a look again at the estimated amounts that are allocated for each project category and for each project. It looks like the minimum project cost is for the community wayfinding project, and that amount is $75,000. So you could add whatever amount of dollar that you would like to include in emergency preparedness with your discussion of the proposed project list. So again, we're looking to you to ask us any questions you like, but we're hoping this evening that we can have your approval or some kind of an amended approval of the Boundary A, of the 25-year timeline, and of the list of projects to go into the draft plan.
All right. Thank you, Allison. Why don't we take one, these one at a time, and any discussions on the Boundary A plan? Yes, Counselor Hinton?
I have a question. I've already asked Allison about this, but if there is within the outside boundary, something on the inside that would be annexed in the future, can we at a later time adjust the boundary to capture those tax dollars?
Elaine, do you want to speak about changes to the boundary?
This is Elaine Howard. The boundary amendment process is outlined by statute, and it's pretty clear, you can add 1% of the original boundary through a minor amendment to your urban renewal plan, and you can add up to 20% of the original boundary through a substantial amendment to the urban renewal plan. So yes, you may add in future property, in, property in the future with those two caveats.
Thank you.
So it, it doesn't matter if it's within, inside the existing boundary, you know, and for some reason exempt by looking at the map?
Yeah.
Yeah, it follows those other criteria? Okay.
Correct, it doesn't matter.
Yep. Any other questions on the Boundary A or concerns? Hearing none? I wonder if it would be all right if we just make a motion to approve the Boundary A to be used in the urban renewal area plan?
Sure. I'd love to approve the Boundary A of the draft Rose End Villages at Cascade Head Urban Renewal Area Draft Plan.
This is Mitch, I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mitt. We have a motion with a second to approve Boundary A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Then, why don't we go to the projects, the project list? And Allison, I guess your suggestion was adding a dollar amount to emergencies, is that was you were suggesting?
Yes, we, we do have emergency preparedness on the list of projects that we had not determined a dollar amount for that project category. And part of the reason is because we have not done emergency preparedness as part of the existing urban renewal area, so we didn't have familiarity with what capital expenditure would be for emergency preparedness. And also, you could consider streets, road improvements, sidewalks, stuff like that, as emergency preparedness if you consider your transportation network improvements as helpful for evacuation. So I, I guess staff was a little bit stumped on what amount of, of money would be there. And, again, keeping in mind, these funds can only be used for capital expenditures, and I don't know, I should have asked Ken Murphy this morning what, what he might consider capital, but, you know, like, we couldn't purchase bottles of water, but we could purchase, or we could construct facilities that could hold bottles of water, if that makes sense. Or, you know, there may be something other than a cache. There, there might be, I don't know, Kennedy, for example, built a vertical evacuation structure, quite costly, but that would be a capital, example of a capital project for emergency preparedness. Or, when they built a building, to change the design to make it so that it could also serve a purpose of emergency preparedness. Those are just some ideas that I'm thinking of off the cuff. What's most important is that this project category is on the list, which means that funds can be used on it. I would recommend just putting some kind of a dollar figure of what you feel is appropriate to have an estimation of investment. You can see, for example, that, I mentioned before, the community wayfinding project we have is $75,000. So you could put in $75,000, you could put in $10,000, basically just a placeholder to make sure that there's a, an intention to invest some kind of dollar figure for emergency preparedness.
Counselor Hinton?
I have an idea. I turned around to talk to Ken, and he's gone already, but the, and I have talked with Ken in the past about the caches that we have now, and that they are in inappropriate containers, and they can't be filled with everything that should be in them because of the inappropriateness of the containers. They're metal, they sweat, they rust, and that's not appropriate. So there are other types of buildings that can be used. And so I would put $100,000 in there. I don't know what that 7% left from the 93 is. Do you have a dollar amount for that? Not that it all has to go in here, but...
Yeah, I, I don't at the moment, but, no, I don't have an exact dollar figure for that.
We have to, my thinking is, we have to start somewhere with the appropriate type of building. And because this is within that urban renewal boundary that we just approved, then it would be a good place to combine different types of funding, maybe getting grants and all that, but we do need seed money in there. And as we know, we can move that around after it's, after we're actually working on these projects. So I would suggest putting $100,000 in there.
So, Allison, I guess a, a staff question, what you're, what I heard your suggestion being put some kind of dollar amount as a placeholder. So it, I guess the question I have, isn't it really irrelevant of how much, as long as, you know, because we don't know actually what the project's going to be? And that allows for the flexibility?
Right. I mean, we also have the ability to do land acquisitions. So it, it may not be that we can create the cash, but it may be that we could purchase the land to see what the cash sits on. So there are lots of ways that we can work on emergency preparedness through capital investments using urban renewal dollars. And, I mean, if you wanted to, you could say to add emergency preparedness up to $100,000 to, try to get as close to $100,000 as possible, given that we need to stay underneath the financial projections that are at about 93% now. So whatever that, whatever that upper threshold is, that we would basically put in whatever dollar amount could fit to keep that, to keep within our total dollars per project.
Yeah, I'm just...
And I think that's what Counselor Hinton was suggesting. I guess that, are there other areas that doesn't, don't have any dollar, placeholder dollars?
No, this is the only one.
All right.
All the other ones do have dollars allocated to them.
Okay. So I think Counselor Hinton likes your suggestion. Any from the phone? Mitch, Riley, Diane, Rick?
Rick, Mark. I, I'm a little, just a little lost because I'm not seeing dollar in the neighborhood in this company. I'm not seeing, and actually, I had to step away from it. I'm not seeing dollar amounts connected, at least in the agenda packet, to any of these projects. So I kind of thought the idea was to just to approve a list and figure out, there not going to be other, I'm guessing we might not be able to do all of them anyway. We're going to pick and choose as the years go by. That, I'm not really clear what the significance of putting a dollar value on it now is.
And Allison, could you?
Yeah. Allison, do you mind if I jump in?
That'd be great, thank you.
This is Elaine, and I, I agree with both sides, and I think there's probably an easy answer. When we do an urban renewal plan, we do have to list projects, and we have to list dollar amounts allocated to those projects. And I think once we talk about the timeframe and the financials, then you can just give us direction to allocate a certain amount, and you could put a floor on that amount for the emergency preparedness. And then as, as we're balancing everything else, we can come back with that to you with the final documents. But just knowing that it's in the plan and that you can change those budget allocations in the future, but when we actually adopt a plan, we, we do have to have something in there. But you, you can give us the authority really to figure that out once we talk about the other financial parameters.
Okay. Does that help, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to, yeah, so, oh, darn, I had a thought in there, just jumped out of my head. Okay, let me go to just another general, because I, you know, I was really pleased to see the public input, and I was at one of those meetings, and it was great to get everybody involved. But, and I, I'm going to repeat something I said at the previous meeting, which is, it's really difficult for me to look at a list like this, and just because I lack expertise on what it takes to develop a piece of land like this. And what are the most sensible projects to move on first? How do we distribute the, the money that, that we're anticipating? And, you know, certainly, certain projects are going to be essential and very expensive. And those, doing those projects is almost by definition going to force the elimination of other projects. I'm a little concerned that we, I want to make sure we get our priorities straight and, and know what the dollars are, and be willing to cut off certain things that maybe sound great, and the public loved them, but the reality is, we just can't do it because the dollars aren't there. So I, I don't know how we sort through all that and certainly don't do it tonight. So it, it's, I mean, I, I'm perfectly willing to vote, yay, let's put everything on the list, but beyond that, you know, I, I don't see that we can make any kind of decision.
Well, and you're exactly right, and you're not being asked to. I think the, it's my understanding, Allison and Elaine, is the projects, any kind of projects, big, big wording is here on the sheets that we're, would be in the approval. And it would, or prioritization and specifics would be done as time moves on and funding allows. Is that, Allison and Elaine?
Yes, that, that's, I, I think that we're in a unique situation right now because the existing urban renewal area is wrapping up, and in the last few years, we've seen a lot of projects get done because we are at the peak of our revenue collection, or we, we have in the last 15, 20 years. And so all of us are used to thinking about what specific projects are getting constructed. And this whole idea of how do we draft a plan that's flexible to move through time for 25 years, if that's the duration you select, without knowing what's important? And really, it's like a, it's like a dartboard, and we have to look at the area, what it needs physically in terms of capital, how we think that it's going to grow over time. And we have to use all the information we have, like our transportation system plan and our park plan, and we have to use everything we have now to make the best guess about all the capital needs in that area. And then, how much can we leverage those dollars with other partners and other grantors in order to get the project done? Now, I can tell you that in the last few years of the existing area, as many of you know, there were some decisions made about what... know, there were some decisions made about what projects should be done with the last urban renewal dollars. And I went through the entire year 2000 development plan and basically looked at every broad and specific project to see what did we not yet get done? So if we had an extra however many millions of dollars, what projects should we do? Well, we have to think about community visioning and what have we told the community we would do and what do we believe is the right thing to do? And what is not going to be done without urban renewal dollars? And there are lots of questions that went into making decisions about what projects should be done, you know, annual budgeting. So you're right, Counselor Mark, that it's important to think about what is reasonable, what can be done. And Elaine has given us a great foundation for that with the financial projections. And then Jody has been great with gathering all this community input. And it is really only over time that we will be able to know exactly what projects can be done. We just, at this point, have to say what's possible. And then, out of what's possible, what gets prioritized through those various channels as we move forward in time, given that there's limited funding. So I don't think I've answered your question, I've just kind of rambled a bit, but I think that we're all used to making decisions about an actual project. And for this plan, you're right, we have to just think about what's possible to do. And then, once there's money, then we start to talk about what projects should be done first, what's the highest priority. And those are decisions that you or your future elected will be making.
All right.
I don't know, somebody else might have a comment, but I'm willing to move that we approve the list of projects and estimated costs to be included in the draft urban renewal area plan.
Is there a second?
This is Mitch, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Mark with a second from Counselor Parsons. And the motion is to approve the project list with the putting in funds. What would be the correct verbiage for the placeholder dollars on emergency?
That worked.
Okay. Is that okay, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, the suggestive language was estimated costs, I thought that worked.
Okay. For the emergency. All right. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Hinton.
I'm sorry, I just, I have to say this every time, and hopefully, when we see this again, it'll change. But in the list of projects, and I can't put my eye on it right now, there is reference to a sidewalk along, it's, I can't find it. Anyway, along Logan Road. And the neighborhood, for years, have called it a pathway rather than a sidewalk, because when it's called a sidewalk, then you think about gutters, and it takes up more space, and a pathway, it wouldn't have to. And also, that would, for me, relate to the undergrounding, because there isn't room for a sidewalk or a pathway necessarily right now. But if the existing pole-mounted utilities were undergrounded, then that, they're in the right way, so that would be the place where I would think a pathway would go. I'm just saying.
So, okay, now, there's a motion with a second to approve the list, but you're somewhere in here, I guess you're suggesting a modification to the motion, that if staff can find it, where Logan Road sidewalk is stated, that it, for the wording gets changed to pathway? Is Counselor Mark, are you okay with that?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
You know, you made the motion on the projects to approve. Counselor Hinton would like to change some wording on one of the projects where it references a sidewalk along Logan Road, and she'd like to remove the word sidewalk and put pathway.
That, you know, that's fine, but I kind of suspect that, I mean, this is a sort of suggestive list. I'm guessing that the language in there isn't all ashen as stone, and if this is exactly what we have to do, we're going to pick and choose and modify the projects as needed, right?
Well, I think that's the concern, is a sidewalk is more intrusive than a pathway, so it could probably go up rather than go down, would be my sense of her concern.
And it'd be much more expensive, potentially.
And maybe, Elaine and Allison, could you weigh in? Is that a concern in a project list at this level?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Do you want to answer that, Elaine?
And Allison. So I understand the importance of word choice, but yes, at this point in the project list, we are not talking about actual design of projects. But I might suggest that wherever we have the word sidewalk in any project list for this plan, if you'd like, we can do sidewalk slash pathway, so that it's understood that it's not necessarily a sidewalk, it could be a pathway, but until we get down to prioritizing the project, budgeting the project, and then designing the project, that that kind of a decision wouldn't be made until that point.
All right. Okay, with that explanation, are you okay with that change, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, I'm not really, the language I'm looking at on page 42 does say sidewalk slash pathway, maybe it shows up somewhere else.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's all Counselor Hinton was concerned about, that it does have. So would just allow staff to make that change if they come across it.
There it is.
Okay.
It's not on their priority list.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the plan. There's no expenditure, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, thank you. Okay, the last item then is the, some of the details of the financing, is that right? The 25-year timeframe or longer or different? Is that?
Yes, right now, we have, we've talked about in the past doing a 30-year or a 25-year plan. And last year, we discussed that we would be moving forward with a 25-year plan. And so we're, that's what we would recommend unless you have any other changes that you would like to make to that duration.
And I guess we have had discussion on, what's it called, under levy scenarios. And this would be not, I guess, a way to reduce the impact on the other taxing, or on all the taxing districts. And we've had previous discussion on that in executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, that was sort of my question, is now the time to choose the under levy concept? And we had also talked about expanding, adding three years or so to...
Yes.
To drop the revenue at the end of the project and also recoup the money that we're not getting because of the other stuff. Is that now the time to do that?
We said at that executive session.
Well, this is, well, we do it now. It is, Counselor.
So I would like to move, right?
Yep.
Okay, I would like to move to approve the under levy of 15% of the total increment value and direct staff to work to extend the duration of time to make up lost revenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second that, Rick Mark.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the only question I have, I tried to get to this earlier, was that, okay, I understand the concept of expanding the time, adding three years wherever we take, because the 15% is causing us to sacrifice money or let the fire district and the city retain money that they were, you know, would expect to have otherwise. And so that gives us a chance to recapture that money. My question, what's coming to me is that, let's say we extended three years, over those three years, we're still taking more money from the fire district than from the city. So they're losing out more, and of course, we don't recoup that money.
But, Mr. Mayor, I think...
No, I'm not really sure how to think about all that.
Counselor Casper would weigh in?
I think perhaps that language is included when we direct staff to work with the duration, to extend the duration of time, to make up the lost revenue, whatever that might be. So I think that might be inclusive of that motion. Is that right?
Well, the lost revenue would be to the urban renewal district.
Right. As opposed to?
The taxing district.
Okay.
I guess what I'm saying is that we're going to make the fire district even more unhappy.
Well, and, you know, it's not just one district. All districts are treated the same. All the taxing districts would have the same benefit or negative. So Allison or Elaine, you want to weigh in on clarification further?
Sure. Elaine, do you want to talk about the reduced impact through under levy?
Do we want to start with the timeframe? Aren't we talking about 25 or 30 years first and then making this adjustment to that?
No.
No, because it may not be 30 years. So it's not a 25 or 30...
We're not starting with 25?
We're starting with 25.
So the motion would be, start with 25 and then ask staff to recommend possibly another couple of years based on how...
Right.
Right, and so...
We're there.
I just didn't hear the 25 to start.
This is Elaine, one of the council members, and I'm not, was it Rick? Asked the question about is this going to work for the fire district, because what you're doing is really extending the area. So what you're trying to weigh, and part of an under levy requires consultant confer with all of the other taxing districts. So we've been having these discussions in executive session, and if you decide you want to proceed, we need to then have these discussions with the district. And the balancing act is, will they want to get some money over every year for the life of the urban renewal area, with the understanding that that could cause the area to last a little longer? Or would they prefer it to be just a 25-year area and not get that money as you go along? And so what we'll be able to say to them is, the city council gave direction to provide 15% to them every year as they go along. And if you get feedback back from them that that, that they really don't want that, then that's information for us to work with. But we don't, we don't really know. And I think the truth is, yes, for the fire district, it's going to put them in the same position of still foregoing revenue, but annually, it will give them some revenue to help maintain their level of service.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then my other question is, and maybe this is what happened with the current district, the one that's expiring, as we get to the end, and theoretically, if our estimates are good and conservative, it could be that we're, by the end, we're bringing in more money than we expect. At that point, could we increase the percentage on the under levy so that those other taxing districts are not hurt as much? But we're still at a point where we're getting a really hefty sum, so we're happy with that, and we could give more back? Is that an option?
Yes, that's what was, that's what happened in the existing urban renewal district.
Okay, then I would like to see a longer term, because I think that's when this could really have some pop. That's my thought.
That's not... So, okay, so you have a motion, but we have on the agenda actions, if any, based upon executive session. That's later on the agenda, right? What we're talking about now is the question of what's the timeframe? And they had given you the options of 25 and 30 years. So do we need to come back and do that first and then ask that later?
Well, since we're asking it now and it's in the motion, you know, and getting explanation, if there's a revision to the motion that you're suggesting, but I think we've got the topic on hand and can...
Well, then I just suggest that we're, we've moved actions, if any, based on executive session to the same time as this item.
Okay, all right. So we have the motion, a second, and we're in discussion, deliberation, other questions? Okay, hearing none from the phone? Yeah?
Right, no question.
Okay. So, should this one be a roll call? Or...
This is time.
Yeah, it's time and...
I think the project list wasn't done by roll, I think this is a vote to spend on this just a moment.
Okay. So we're told it, just a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Allison, is there anything else that you need at this point?
I think that we are all set. If you, let's see, because of the duration and the 15% revenue share or under levy, that probably won't have any impact to the estimated cost of the projects on the project list, because of making up for that with the extended time. But I just want to clarify that that's all your understanding and that you're fine with staff making adjustments in the estimated project cost to accommodate the duration with the under levy.
That's good.
Yes.
Yes.
Does anybody not understand it that way? Hearing none? Yes, Allison.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's move on. The next item is new name for the villages at Cascade Head.
And I can tell you that I didn't write this agenda item and wrong-wrote it, but I imagine that the process to amend a master plan is quite involved. It typically takes about $200,000 to properly amend a master plan. We currently have a master plan that expires in like two years. So you have the option to weigh... So you have the option to wait, and then you won't have an approved master plan. You still have recorded plats that refer to the name Villages Cascade Head. You have to amend those plats if you're going to change the name. You have declarations of covenants and restrictions that were written by this law firm out of Portland, and every time I talk to them, I get a bill. So that's not, that's a small expense. So this is rather like having a 1961 International Scout with no engine and all flat tires, and we're talking about what vanity plate we want to put on it. You have a lot of decisions to make about the villages' master plan.
Do you have an opinion?
I'm just telling you. And so just to amend the master plan, only to address the name, would not be an efficient use of city resources. I think you can decide that you like this name better than that name, and give direction for staff when they are amending or contracting for amendments in the master plan to include that, but I don't see it as a standalone item. And in fact, we have probably enough to talk about with the villages to have a work session to talk about what do we want to do with the future of the villages.
I think, I think that's exactly right. I agree with all that. I know it costs money to do these things, and I... Howard has left the conference. I would just say that changing the name and having it wait for the, you know, a comprehensive master plan is the right idea, not to have to go back and change everything. And we do need a master plan, a comprehensive master plan. We're trying to sell this property, and we need to know what it is that we want. And so it's all packaged together, I think, is how we, how we sell that area. And right now, the name has, the existing name has too many anchors on it, and I think we need to free this up and get it out there and get people excited about the area again. And that's hard to say right now, but...
So...
We could wait to, to do the renaming, because there's no urgency, but, and I did send to Kathy, and she, I believe, sent it out to all of us, some suggested criteria for deciding, you know, to helping us decide with the name, and then the list of names that's been generated already. We've received that too, so...
So I guess my question for legal counsel would be, is there such a thing as a DBA in something like this? If, if I hear you right, Counselor Hinton, you'd like maybe to start switching over, not leap through, not to the expense where, where the budget costs, but when the opportunity arises, we're then able to slip in a new name that's being used and...
If you're going to continue with the development, are you going to let the master plan expire and then not have an authorized development, and let whoever, a purchaser of a portion of the property, to name it themselves? You know, I think there's value in keeping a unified master plan for the whole thing, and that's why we went through the process of creating some new land use designations. But it's kind of premature, because you're going to be working with other partners, and, you know, deciding the name ahead of time might be a deal breaker for some people.
There's been a lot of discussion about the name already, and that's how we've generated this list at the HOA meeting, at bigger meetings that involve more people that are around there, just, so it's not...
Why, I've heard you say it's not urgent or anything else, but I guess what I'm trying to do, what is the next step? Because you could continue, and someone takes the lead to come up with, for down the road, and...
If you want to just get input for a future master plan application, then you can use whatever process you want to get that input, have a contest, whatever you want to do. In terms of like a DBA, well, that was kind of like we did with Explorer Lincoln City, but that was, you know, entity reference, we're using that name.
Sorry?
It doesn't change the name on the master plan. So I, you can use whatever process you want to use to get input on what a desirable name would be, but that doesn't change the real issues.
We've kind of done that, though. That's how we're here today. That's the direct, I mean, I wish Ron were here, because he could talk to this, but...
So, you, you know, I don't know where we go with this, other table it for now and...
Put it back on the agenda next, you know, at a future time, but we've been talking about it. Over a year ago, there was consensus from the council to direct staff to help figure out how we do this name change, and it's just been sitting there. So we've been getting, collecting names, and we've got all these names, they're in, you know, they're right there in your packet, and so people have been participating, and Ron has helped with that, so I don't...
So I don't know what you're asking, or what this agenda item...
Well, my ask has not changed. I think for the benefit of trying to sell the property up there to get to a place where we actually can, can get a comprehensive master plan, which we need, we've done a lot of work already with changing zoning and, and that kind of thing, and it's kind of like the next step. Well, the name is important, and we already have, we have a lot of things done, we have to do a lot of things with this area. So what are we calling it when we're out there talking to people? Hey, we have this place, we don't have the master plan yet, I don't know that we need a master plan and then change, I mean, I don't, I don't, we don't have to... I like your DBA idea.
But, but we do agree that it's not worth independently to spend the money to change the name?
Right.
Okay, so...
That's not my point.
Right.
I understand that.
So then what we're trying to do, and I'm looking at legal counsel, is there a, you know, back to the DBA, because I have nothing else to reference, you know, if whatever entity wants, this entity wants to come up with a new name to reference this project, and...
I don't know of an official way to give it a DBA like you did with Explorer Lincoln City. I do know that if you make a motion to say, let's, in a future application, go with the name as X, then you'll say, propose, you'd say the Villages Cascade Head, propose future project, I mean, ONS X, until we get the application processed.
But I, I think what Counselor Hinton, make sure I'm right, is, would like us to advance a, the potential of a new name further than just a sheet of paper of collecting names. And much like a new name of the park we just went through, with some kind of process to do that, once completed and elevated to one name, that that start, you know, maybe the, you know, how it gets referenced to that, whether it's DBA, and then when the opportunity comes to change, or if there is ever, but, you know, you know, willing, you know, spruce until you previously known as, you know, I don't...
You can give direction to say, henceforth, it's to be referred as X, doesn't change the fact that there are a hundred other things that have to be done.
Yeah.
So, if you want to have a contest or go through the same kind of process you did with the park naming, you can do that.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure I'm getting through. Is, I'm not talking about a legal change at this point. Are you?
No.
Because when you talk about a hundred different things to change...
Well, when I talk about a hundred different things, I talk about the things that have to be done.
For a legal change?
Well, to do, make changes at the Villages Cascade Head. If we want to convey property to someone, that we have to plat that property into a legal parcel so that we can convey it, that has a lot of importance, because it makes it conveyable.
Okay.
We can't do it unless you do that. I think staff needs to spend time on those kinds of things, rather than things that don't have any real effect now.
Okay.
I, I think, that's why I think we ought to have a work session and prioritize what needs to be done. I mean, and, and one thing you could do is, in the budget process, you can put $200,000 in the budget and say, update the master plan. But I'm not sure that...
That's not going to happen.
But I'm not sure that your staff, planning staff, wants to actually update the master plan. And I think they might be at the point where they're willing to let it go. So I think we, this is a bigger issue.
Okay.
And if you, but if you want to spend your resources on coming up with a name, just direct that that be done?
Well, I, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Hinton, I think, you know, what, what I'm hearing, and I don't disagree, we have bigger issues facing the city in the short order, where, you know, this needs to stay on that list, neverless, it's building of things to do, and, you know, perhaps continue, you know, as you're doing, community outreach of name suggestions. Does anybody on the phone want to weigh in?
They went to bed.
Yeah? Okay.
I don't know, Mitch, he's on the HOA.
You, you still are there, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to put my thoughts together. Still here, I'm letting you guys sort this one out.
Okay. So Mitch, did you have a...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going to say I'm in favor of currently tabling it due to the cost. I don't want to spend that kind of money on changing the name.
It doesn't cost anything.
We'll, we'll keep it under Counselor Hinton's name to keep reminding us.
Year after year, year after year.
Okay, let's move on. We've got some, two public comments, opportunities, back to legal. Legal, could you help us avoid any criticism of having public comment when we've made it difficult for the public to comment?
Well, the door's open, and there is room seating, and we even have an overflow room to make sure that we respect social distancing. But I believe both of these items, which call for not public hearings, but an opportunity for public comment under RS 194-160, both of them could be continued if you would like to just give the public more time to communicate to us what their thoughts are. Again, the two public comment items are the composting rates, which will go into effect in 2021, and the other resolution just has to do with what's the application fee going to be for a mobile food unit, both through licensing and land use, and what's the concession rate going to be? Well, it's going to be the same as, as the street vendors. But that, those two resolutions, where you're basically establishing rates and fees, can both be continued. I believe that one of the counselors talked to the representative of the North Lincoln, Tina French, and they were okay with this delay of two weeks if you wanted to give that much time.
No.
So I, I have no objection to it. We were just trying to bring these two items forward. I don't see anyone rushing in to do a mobile food unit in the next two weeks.
And, and I think the other was, again...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I make, can I make a motion to postpone these two, please?
Yeah. Go ahead.
And I would second that.
Oh, what was the motion?
Postpone for two weeks.
Two, two postpone, that's the city attorney's...
So let's both resolutions, I think it's eight and nine.
Nine and 10. Oh, resolution is nine and 10. So we have a motion on the table to delay both these public comments and appropriate resolutions till next meeting?
That leaves... And I second that. This is Diane.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And the discussion is to include information about, not to delay it too long, because a new truck needs to be ordered within 60 days, so we need to keep that in mind. And the public might need to have a little more information about the proposed fees, like the $6.58 flat fee versus a 10% charge on the current monthly bill.
I, I did send you all confidential communication on that. Yes, sir.
I don't remember where I saw it now, but Tina French did propose an alternate proposal for the fee increase that addressed the city attorney's concerns about boosting the commercial rate without giving them, without giving the commercial businesses anything in return. So she had a suggestion to address that, which I think is not in the current...
Yeah, I, I wasn't aware of that. That would be another reason to continue it.
Okay, yeah, I'm not aware of that one either. So, so the motion, the motion on the table is to move these to the next council meeting, same time, same place, and we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Next agenda, or next council meeting? Thank you. That leaves then down to ordinances. There's ordinance number 2020-09, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, mending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, adding Chapter 8.11, nuisance polyesterine foam?
Polyesterine. Can we do ordinance eight before we do ordinance nine? Just kind of maybe, if it helps the city order that it takes in order.
Oh, okay.
So the next item on the, so moving eight forward to be, this is first reading ordinance 2020-08, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, Chapter 934, signage, Section 934020, temporary signage exempt from land use permitting, Paragraph F, to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. Ask for approval of first reading. And by way of explanation, this is just, time has caught up with us, and the six-month extension we previously granted while the staff is working on the signed code is up, and we need to re-up it so we can finish work on the sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I have a question to that point?
Certainly.
Is six months enough? Are we going to be doing this again in another six months?
The, the sign ordinance was...
Is it a year more appropriate?
The sign ordinance was set to go to the planning commission last Tuesday. It was delayed because of a lack of a quorum, so they were about to have the hearing and come to you with a recommendation.
Okay, so we're closed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So does somebody want to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2020-08 regarding the extension of feather banners for an additional six months.
This is Mitch, I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Are we on a roll call on an ordinance? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, did we have the first reading?
Pardon?
This is first reading.
This is first reading.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland? Diane Kuz?
Yeah.
Rick Mark?
Yeah.
Mitch Parsons?
Yeah.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
And Judy Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, don't worry. Your honor, counsel, this is second reading ordinance number 2020-08, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, Chapter 934, signage, Section 934020, temporary signage exempt from land use permitting, Paragraph F, to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance... I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-08 regarding feather banners additional six months extension.
Mitch Parsons, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Riley Hogland?
Yeah.
Diane Kuz?
Yeah.
Rick Mark?
Yeah.
Mitch Parsons?
Yeah.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll go back to 2020-09. This is first reading of ordinance number 2020-09, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, adding Chapter 8.11, nuisance polyesterine foam. Ask for approval of first reading. By way of explanation, this ordinance is based on a pared-down version of the City of Ashland ordinance. It only really addresses foam when used for food, prepared food. It does not go into the grocery store and attempt to get the foam that's underneath the meat and things like that. That was a deliberate choice because of commerce clause issues associated with regulating things that are being transported.
I was just gonna say, PS to that, that was also what council asked for.
And, and counsel, I would ask, given the circumstances and crisis we're in at the moment, that we consider pushing this off until after the crisis? Because we've asked restaurants to do takeout that haven't done takeout before. Their, the eatery industry is in a bit of a whirlwind as it is, and I would hate to burden them with another item at this time. So, I know-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. I, I wanted to suggest the same thing. I also want to add, I'm a little surprised and disappointed that this came before us so quickly. It would have originally have been, I thought we were gonna discuss this in a work session, and there's absolutely no consideration in any of this being given to the recommendations of the Sustainability Committee. And I, I, I mean, why have a Sustainability Committee if we're not gonna consider their proposal? So I would strongly urge that we put this off.
Well, one, I guess I would debate the question on Sustainability Committee, because this came up after the, or long before the Sustainability Committee made recommendations. And I think we had at the last council meeting or so a discussion about that. And counsel, at that time, you, and it wasn't unanimous by any means, just wanted it pushed forward. And we would consider the suggestions by the Sustainability up and beyond this. So that, that piece, I would challenge, that the piece of just disarray given the crisis we're in is easy enough for me to, you know, make the ask and certainly request that we defer this till after the crisis. Counselor Hinton?
I was just gonna suggest that we could go forward with this, but put a real long timeline before it kicks in, and if we need to adjust it, then we can.
You could, you could do, as Counselor Hinton suggests, you could put, and that was one of my suggestions, was you could have a delayed effective date. You could adopt it now and delay the effective date, but that would presume that we know how long this current crisis is gonna last. You could complete first reading and continue second reading to a date certain, and then see where we are there. Or you could just not do first reading and just continue.
You know, again, you know, all it ta, it doesn't take a lot to tip over a business or a small business. And, and my sense, even with a deferred date down the road, anything else, it lingers with another bomb to land. And I don't know how many, but, you know, we've got businesses that have never done takeout before. So I, my preference would be just to put it off. Riley can take the wrath of, you know, the citizenry out there.
You guys are funny, huh?
Well, I shot one.
That is how, that is how everything works. You said, "Well, Riley said so," and then everybody's like, "Oh, okay."
So Riley, would you, how do you feel about this? Because you've been a, a big advocate for it.
Sure. Thank you for asking, Mayor. I feel like I would be in support of reading, doing first reading, having second reading at a date certain. I would also be in favor of enacting the ordinance and then having it to be starting at a date, a later date, so that way that we are making decisions and also taking the consideration of the current state of affairs.
Other people?
I like that idea.
I agree with that one.
And which one? He had a couple of them there.
Oh, I agree with doing first reading, but holding it off until after the crisis. Second reading.
Second ra, reading, just keep pushing it out? Okay. Counselor Casper?
I'm in favor, sorry, I'm, this is Mitch. I'm in favor of either tabling it or just doing first reading tonight.
Counselor Casper?
If we do first reading tonight, then when would second reading appear? When, when we bring it up again?
Well, you have to do a date certain, and then you have to keep deferring it and deferring it. So you're adding it to an agenda to keep-
I would, I would pick an agenda three months out.
Okay, I, I-
I, I have an idea. What, what if we do, do first and maybe even second reading, but make the start date like March 1st, 2021? Like we're doing-
I think that, that's very important. I think, in order to-
Doesn't make a-
... businesses anyway, I would not have suggested enacting right away, but rather six months to accommodate. I don't feel like making a motion of, of having it less than six months is appropriate for the businesses to change over. And also, we'd be making that decision in six months. We could say, "Oh, well, we're still dealing with, you know, the effect of March."
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I think if you wait just six months, you'll be in winter, and that's probably not a good time to make a transition. But I agree with Counselor Hinton. If you made it a year, it puts you in the spring and you get ready for summer.
So a potential motion might be, motion to approve first reading, continue second reading to, no, motion to approve first reading, continue second reading to next, whatever our next meeting is.
Meeting.
April, whatever, what's our next meeting? April 13th?
Let's look.
No, and-
And wait a minute.
With, with the direction to make the effective date March of 2021. And that way-
I don't, I don't, I don't want to agree on that date. I'll agree, the motion was to have second reading after.
Okay, have second reading and have-
I don't want to put a date.
And proposes a, a delayed effective date. I can give you alternate language for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's good.
Well, yeah. So, so, you know, I-
The, the motion was to have first reading and then delay second reading until the April meeting.
April 13th.
Second.
Is that our, is that our meeting date?
Next meeting's on April 6th.
No, it's the second Monday.
Oh, that's my bad.
Okay, 13th. So, there's a motion-
And I second it.
And Counselor Casper-
Second.
There's a motion with a second to approve this ordinance first reading, of which we haven't had yet.
Who made the motion?
Riley.
Counselor Hogland.
I actually did do the reading.
Oh, did you? Do you need to read anything into it?
No. What I'll do for second reading is I'll have alternate effective dates for you, and you'll, we'll read the one that you guys sent along, and then that'll be what the effective date.
All right, so we have a, a motion for first reading, motion to approve with a, a second. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, I'm repeating myself, but the Sustainability Committee, you know, we, we made a point of putting business-oriented people on that committee because we were, at least I was hoping, that if they made suggestions, that it would take the concerns of businesses. And, and, and what they did was they came forth with a suggestion that incorporated the businesses, was gonna ask them for advice, was going to possibly come up with a clever way of maybe subsidizing them with the difference in cost between the styrofoam and the alternate, you know, options. And I'm not strongly in favor of banning styrofoam, but I am not interested in rushing into this without getting the, letting the businesses have their voice. So I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this one.
And I, I heard Counselor Parsons would, would go either way for tabling it or, you know, this type of motion. I too, you know, the subject matter doesn't bother me. I'm, I'm not interested, quite frankly, into down the road, because I don't know what down the road's gonna look like. So I would be opposed simply for wanting to table it until the crisis is over. And hopefully during that time, we hear more from Sustainability, you know, Committee, because that was on the work session that we had to modify last week. To your point, Counselor Mark. Any other-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Kind of procedural question. I don't think I've heard anybody actually move to table a motion that's been put on the floor since I joined the council. But is that something, I mean, can I just move right now to table this motion?
No, you can't, because we have a, another motion on the table right now.
That's the motion I want to table.
Now, well, we gotta act on this one first.
Okay, okay.
So I'll call for the vote, roll call, please.
Diane Kuz?
Can, can we go back over what was the motion?
The, the motion was to-
Have first reading tonight, second reading at the, the next meeting.
April 13th.
Yeah.
Rick Mark?
No.
Mitch Parsons?
No.
Dick Anderson?
No.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland? Four yes, three no.
So a motion was approved?
But you have a no, so it automatically has to come back.
Oh, so, so it automatically has to, we can't do the second reading at this point. So that will come back. Okay, we have everything on the agenda. City manager actually hasn't come back from the county city meeting, which is kind of City attorneys, do you have any remarks? Nothing, comments? Nobody's left in the room for public comment. Councilors, on, how about on the phone?
Well, you know what? I, I have a, I have an idea that has to do with our wastewater treatment plan, if you want to hear it.
Can you, regarding what?
The wastewater treatment plan, plan runoff.
The, okay.
Yes, Lewis.
The discharge, okay?
Yes, the discharge.
All right.
Would it be possible, would it be possible to create a slow or some kind of appropriate sink, like a, like a, I don't know, like a dam, so that way the water builds up before going downstream? Having some kind of fish access so that that's all stayed fine, but immediately where we dump out is like, say, eight feet of water versus 10 inches?
You know what? I love all that engineering stuff. Counselor, you, you ought to spend some time with public works and share, share with them your ideas, because I know they're working on solving the dilemma. Rather than let us policy geeks enter into this.
That's, that's, that's great. I just didn't know where appropriate.
Yeah.
Just that idea came in, and I said, "Well, what if we have deeper water where it goes out?"
Yeah. No, I, it's a good idea, but they're, they're all on the table, that's for sure. How about Counsel, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I haven't really been watching this video screen here, which I do have on my computer. I had it locked, I didn't realize that city manager had left. So I, I wanted to add my thanks to him for the hard work he's been putting in the past several days, and Mayor also, and anybody on staff, city attorney as well. Because it's been, it's been a scary time, and it's been great to see the city leadership step forward and, and indicating day after day that they're considering all the things that need to be considered. And I think we came up with some good results. And I also wanted to thank, I'm very impressed by the emails that I've been receiving, the telephone calls I've been having with citizens. And Judy, I'm sorry to hear that you were, it sounds like you were verbally attacked. I was not. Every comment I've heard was well thought out and, and well reasoned, and it actually moved my opinion a few, three days ago, I wasn't really thinking it was necessary to close the hotels, but I came around and I agreed. And anyway, let's hope this all makes a difference. That's all I got.
All right. Diane, do you have something?
Just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they've done, involved, got emails and working on it. So other than that, no. I'm just, I'm social distancing.
Mayor, I have another question.
Oh, you know, oh, you're kind of bump ahead of Counselor Parsons, are you?
No, in fact, can you come back to me?
Okay. Counselor Parsons?
Yeah, I just concur with what everybody's saying. Thanks to the staff that's been working on this, I'm glad we finally came to some sort of action.
Counselor Hogland?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to speak to all the residents, you know, that have been listening and, you know, they've saw on social media a lot. I also found a lot of their hateful messages and a lot of angry people. And I understand the reasons why we're trying to protect ourselves, but I want to remind everybody that those same terms, when they hear Governor Tate Brown say, "Go outside," they immediately think of Lincoln City. And how wonderful of an opportunity, of a, how wonderful of a thing that we have that when people hear, "Go outside," they come to Lincoln City. And I just want to give respect to all of that and understand everybody's frustration about our supplies going low and, you know, outsiders taking it in, but, or taking it all. But I, I really feel like with kindness, we can have that distance. And, you know, now with this order that we're gonna be enacting tomorrow, you know, we are protecting ourselves a little bit more, but also showing the respect of those visitors that come here and, and make, you know, our city as successful as it is. And so I just don't want to be seen as, you know, so angry with them, you know? So.
Yeah. All right. Counselor Casper?
I just hope that everyone in our community enjoys the beaches and the restrooms that we have worked very specifically to clarify that they're open, because I know we will be needing them.
Counselor Hinton?
Diane, I just want to say that I have, even though, as Counselor Casper has said, been called a few names, and even before, they've asked what is happening. So that, that to me was a little jarring, because I know how hard everybody has been working during these last, especially three days. And I do want to say, though, about social media, I've been keeping track of it, and where I can, I've been making corrections. And for the most part, when I- And for the most part, when I do then, provide more information than even today, somebody who was kind of name-calling and, you know, not being kind and thinking that we should be finding other jobs. After I clarified what was happening, she came back and she said, oh, thank you very much, I understand now. I really appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. So I think we have to keep on helping people understand the process, that the mayor mostly is this one. Why doesn't the mayor do this? Well, he can't do something by himself. He likes to, but he can't do it. And so I just think we have to keep it up, and those people who are using foul language and calling us names and telling us we aren't working and all of that, we just need to correct them. I think we don't have to take it. And I do appreciate all of the emails and phone calls and all of that, the people, that they know that they can contact us. I just really appreciate them.
Thank you. I would agree with you. Just as a point of reference, I, as you know, I made a statement on Saturday on the mayor's page, and looking at that today, there was over 7,000 views, some 250 comments. And so I felt good about it, because that means we just about hit everybody in town. So I put out another one today to update people, and by mid-afternoon, it was already at 4,000 with only 100 comments. So gee, negatives outweigh the positives, but like everyone has said, you know, I think our role is to educate and stay calm and be patient. And, you know, government isn't easy or clean or very visible, but fortunately, we get it done. And so I appreciate everybody's hard work, because it couldn't be done without all of us working together. And that includes city staff, because they're certainly taking a lot as well. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and call it good.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Be safe, be well.
Riley Hoagland?
Have left the Congress.